Yes, sir.
Does this roll right into an action? Does this session roll right into a court?
Discussion, no. Discussion, no action takes place.
Thank you. You are welcome.
I have not.
All right, we'll go with what we have at the moment. I'm going to call the July 22, 2020 study session of the Holland City Council to order. First item on the agenda is public comment. At this point, anyone in the public may address council. Please note that this is one-way communication. We do not answer questions or engage in debate at this point. You have three minutes to address council on any subject that you would like to. You'll notice that there are three lights on the dais in front of me. There is a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. The green light means you are still doing all right on time. The yellow light means you have one minute or less left. And when the red light is on, your time has expired. And we are strict about that, and we appreciate your cooperation in that regard. And this will be the only public comment period time during this meeting. So with that, is there anyone who would like to address council at this time? Please come forward. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Alan Hookster. I live at 3977 Tallgrass in Park Township. Thank you for this opportunity to address the council. It is very much appreciated. I hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men and women are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Victims of acts of discrimination are afforded the opportunity to report the discrimination to the Human Rights Commission of Holland. The form on which these incidents are to be reported already includes all of the protected classes included in the proposed ordinance, including the new classes, which raises a question, but I will not go into that question now. The form also states that the nature of all complaints are documented in a monthly report, implying that statistics on the nature of the complaints received should be available. Has the Human Rights Commission provided statistics and data on the number of discrimination complaints filed with their commission that are described as discrimination based on sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression? Before an ordinance is added or modified, we should seek to understand the scope of the problem we are seeking to remedy. Will the statistical information be made available to the public? The proposed ordinance contains only one exception for faith-based organizations, an exception for religious educational institutions. Are there no other exceptions? Or do churches and all other faith-based institutions need to rely solely on Section 25.9, the free exercise of religion for their exception? Granting one specific exception only begs the question of why other faith-based institutions are not provided exceptions. Regarding public accommodations, think of restrooms, showers, locker rooms, et cetera, that have historically been designated for use on the basis of biological sex. Will they now be designated based on gender identity? The example is as follows. A biological male whose gender identity is female, will they now be permitted to use the women's locker room and showers at the public high school and at the Holland Aquatics Center? Is this a logical conclusion of the ordinance you are proposing? If so, please be clear with the public. Regarding all other programs in public schools in which participation has historically been based on biological sex, think sports here, will participation now be designated based on gender identity? Is this a logical conclusion of the ordinance you are proposing? Please be clear with the public on these. I mean no respect to those who suffer from gender dysphoria, but singling out the attribute of sex to be defined by our internal sense of being, but requiring other attributes to be defined by objective reality seems to be inconsistent. Why can't our internal sense of being determine other personal characteristics we have, such as age, race, color, et cetera? I apologize for these Orwellian examples, but you've led me to this. If you want to control people's thoughts, begin by commandeering their words. Sex assigned at birth as opposed to biological—
Minister Mayor, that's three minutes.
Thank you. Sorry, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. And other duties as assigned. Oh, before you come up, we'd like to disinfect the podium. Thank you, Keith.
Obviously, a guy that's been on vacation a few days, right?
Thank you. Do you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, sure. My name is Sarah Van Tongren, and I live at 27 West 25th Street, and I work at 222 South River Avenue. Thank you, Mayor and City Councilor, for responding with action by voting to move forward the nondiscrimination ordinance. As you know, I'm a mental health therapist that lives and works in the city of Holland. I thought tonight it would be important to share why I started speaking out about Holland's lack of a nondiscrimination ordinance. I moved here eight years ago because my husband got a job at Hope College. I had previously worked as a social worker in Colorado and Virginia. And when I opened my practice here in Holland, I saw a pattern of cultural and narrative trauma by my LGBTQ clients, more than I had seen in any other place that I had lived. Here, they experienced that they were not wanted, not welcome, and not equal on their own. This was affecting their health, well-being, and safety. I could no longer be silent. We all know that suicide rates are higher among LGBTQ individuals at alarming rates, in part because of social isolation, rejection, and discrimination. As you discuss the nondiscrimination ordinance, I implore you to remember that you are discussing individual lives, actual human lives, citizens of this city. You are talking about the woman who spoke in December about being fearful of writing down her wife's name at her son's preschool. You are talking about the college student who was born and raised in Holland and does not know if Holland loves him. You are talking about the two young children who were wanting swimming lessons, and they were rejected that because of their two moms. You are talking about the visually impaired therapist who was seeking accommodations at her job. You are talking about the Black and Latinx children that go to Holland Public Schools. You are talking about me, a woman. You're talking about Mr. Bird, a person of color. You're talking about Raul, a person of color. You're talking about Nikki, Ms. Arnsoers, a woman. You're talking about Ms. Raymond, a woman. You are talking about your citizens, your fellow council members, our children, our neighbors. This is not just an LGBTQ issue concern, this is a citizen of Holland concern. This is a community concern. All people deserve to live here and shop here and eat here and swim here and participate in the life of the city here. You have an opportunity, council members, to participate in history, to affect the change. Failing to offer protections in the way of comprehensive nondiscrimination ordinance would put plainly perpetuate the trauma of nine years ago, which the community has not yet healed. You, as our council, have the responsibility to protect the health, well-being, and the safety of our community, and now is your opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Is there anyone else who would like to address council? And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Kat Schulte. I live on West 14th Street. And I wanted to comment on the letter you received from the Human Relations Commission regarding that antidiscrimination ordinance you're discussing. First, I'm concerned that they didn't address Councilman Hookster's inquiry from last week regarding what resources they would need to aid them in effectively carrying out this ordinance. I'm really grateful that you want to equip them to really effectively support what you're discussing. And I'm concerned that their dismissive nature towards your direct request shows that maybe they're not taking seriously your thorough and very long consideration and discussion of this. Secondly, I just need to say, we all remember that Vicki Lynn Holmes, who was on the Human Relations Commission, ran for council this fall and strongly spoke out against these protections. She even went so far as to distribute a flyer specifically on this issue. It became a flashpoint for the election. Others running, some of you before us now, were also there and spoke out in support of the ordinance. The people already voted in support of this ordinance when we voted you in. If you recall, I was here in the winter reminding you of that very fact. And I just want to say, we already made our voices heard. We do not need another popular vote. Also, the Human Relations Commission itself recommended this ordinance nine years ago. Why the need all of the sudden for a public vote after one recommendation, years of work, an election, and months of consideration? It causes me to wonder if it's the personal biases of the individuals on that committee that I've stated earlier are the cause. Further, when a member of the Human Relations Commission are so publicly opposed to these protections, and they go so far as to disregard a formal request from council, it is just no surprise that the formal complaints are not being brought to them on this issue from LGBTQ plus people. This lack of investment and commitment to the safety of this population is precisely why we need this ordinance. Lastly, you just don't put civil rights issues up for public vote. It's our leadership, you, who make these decisions. Looking at the statistics from the 1960s, if the Civil Rights Act of 1964 was put up for popular vote, it most likely would have failed. Elected officials are in place to ensure the health, well-being, and safety of its members, even if that call is unpopular, though I would argue that right now it is a very popular opinion. Frankly, half of you before me may not have the opportunity to be where you are in your place of leadership if it were not for other leaders before us who set up protections for each of you. So to put the ordinance up for a popular vote at this point would be a clear example, in the words of Martin Luther King Jr., of "Justice too long delayed is justice denied." Please pass the ordinance as is on August 5th. Thank you.
Thank you, Kat. And would you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Jeffrey Sorensen, and I'm the director out on the Lakeshore at 451 Columbia Avenue. Mayor Box and members of council, just last week, several of you stated that you wish to do something now in regards to making Holland an inclusive and diverse community where we all get to live, work, and shop. Now, that reference revolved around the possibility of a policy, and a couple of you also expressed your displeasure that you could have done something now, but you didn't when the policy failed. I am here to tell you that that unanimous yes regarding the nondiscrimination ordinance's first reading wasn't doing nothing, as some of you believe. It was a huge step towards showing that Holland's reputation of intolerance is a thing of the past. I was discouraged, however, to see that when the council asked the Human Relations Commission to review the language of the ordinance, that the commission instead made a recommendation regarding the council's vote on the ordinance and not on the language itself. Their statement to the council references allowing the public to be a part of the process. I think that the 150 people present outside a couple weeks ago, this room being full as it has been every week, the dozens of public comments submitted via email every week, and the 660 letters of support for this ordinance already shows that the public is involved in this process and that this ordinance is not only what is wanted, but what is needed by the public. So I ask that you hold true to those sentiments of wanting to do something now. You still have the opportunity to take action and make the decision as city council to do what your constituents have asked. Pass the nondiscrimination ordinance in its entirety during the second reading to protect all that live, work, and shop here. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure. Good afternoon. My name is Tanya Dozeman, and I live in Park Township at 66 Crosswind Drive. I've lived in Holland most of my life, and include Holland Heights as my childhood stomping grounds, and 12th and 10th Street as places that I have called home as an adult. Currently, I am one of the clergy persons who serve at First United Methodist Church just a block north of here. I want to thank the council and mayor for voting for the ordinance over the policy, and I hope that the nondiscrimination ordinance is kept intact so that it is congruent with the Michigan Department of Civil Rights. It is my position and experience that great things, things we cannot even imagine, are waiting for us when we decide to protect basic human rights. First United Methodist Church is a congregation of approximately 500 persons. In February of 2019, we had a vote to determine if we were ready to become a reconciling congregation. A reconciling congregation is one that embraces and works for the full participation of our LGBTQ plus siblings within our denomination. The vote in our church was near unanimous for inclusion, but that's not the best part. When we learned that others were not being treated as we would want them to be treated, from hearing their lived experiences in our church and in our community, we repented and began the reconciliation work necessary. At the same time that our spirits and minds opened, our physical doors did as well. During that time of learning and discernment, the idea of refresh, the ministry that offers showers, meals, access to community services, and community to our neighbors experiencing homelessness in this city, was born. Literally, Sunday, the vote happened, and Tuesday, the ministry started. It seems to me that this is an exciting opportunity. Once the city council passes the nondiscrimination ordinance with specific protections for our LGBTQ plus siblings, what is waiting to be born in this city and from this very city council? More options for affordable housing, work towards healing systemic injustices to persons of color, the opportunities are endless and just waiting for us. I pray we move forward towards inclusion. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. Is there anyone else that would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Anne Hunrickson, 338 Royal Park Drive, Zeeland. I've been told I've been up here every meeting just about, and that nobody's listening. Well, it isn't whether you listen or not, it's that it needs to be said. And there's another side to this, that 25% of the people in Holland, residents, voted for this. That was one thing. 13% of Holland voted for the particular people. So keep it in perspective. Thank you, council, for your compassionate response to those LGBT community who came to the July 15th meeting. One particular lesbian woman revealed that she was raped and molested. I could relate, because as a young child, I was also molested. It is such a betrayal of trust resulting in a lifetime of feeling unvalued as a woman, a kind of PTSD the rest of your life. My transgender daughter went through molestation in foster care. Councilman Corbin made it very clear that the intent of this council is to make sure that all people are protected and safe. I so appreciate that pledge. He spoke for the entire council. Next Wednesday, there will be an event that I would like to extend an invitation to all of you to attend. July 29th at 7:00 at the Gazevo Centennial Park will be a prayer rally, not a protest, for people of faith to gather and pray for you and this ordinance. We are coming together to pray for wisdom and God's will. We are praying for you collectively and personally by name. I want it understood that we are not against sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression. Because God loves everyone, we are for a well-ordered law that the residents of Holland can honor, live into, rather than be forced upon. We would be delighted if you would join us. After I sent out the invitation far and wide, I got this text. Anne, if people respond to this, and you invite the LGBT community, most of them that show up will be gay activists. If anyone from the conservative side show up, many may not because of the fear of an encounter. My other thought is the gay activists will show up with signs and agenda and public image that will blunt what we are trying to do in prayer. I know you're trying the best for everyone, but the gay activists that are pushing this ordinance are very focused and have no interest in compromise or unity. And I want to qualify that, because the people who have come before you and brought their case, just like these people here, are not necessarily the gay activists—
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, that's three minutes.
Thank you, Anne. Is there anyone else that would like to address council at this time?
Bob Ashby, 967 Songbird Lane. Last week, there seemed to be a sentiment by some members of the council that certain elements of this discussion have been stupid or irrelevant. Since no one challenged that public rebuke and even chuckled at it, at the risk of contributing to more stupidity and irrelevancy, I'm going to finish the challenge I was unable to finish and add a few more. I challenge the council to publicly justify why conservative remarks of conscience or faith or any other comments like them are not relevant to the question before us. I would further challenge the council to justify the total lack of discussion of the same procedures used nine years ago, the vetting, and the accusations, and the slanders, to the current climate, which is politically, culturally, and morally light years away from the country that we lived in then. Incidentally, I'm not interested in platitudes, present company accepted, about the First Amendment and Michigan's constitutional protections. Those protections are quickly being nullified by what our city attorney correctly referred to as developing law at the highest judicial levels, and everybody here knows it. The God who made the world and all the things in it is the Lord of heaven and earth, since he himself gives to all people life and breath and all things. In him we live and move and have our being. Religion is an organized set of beliefs and practices of worship, but those things aren't the half of who born-again believers are and how they practice their faith in the public square. Their rebirthed, soulish relationship with God involves the free exercise of a divine relationship, no matter what business they run or what services they provide. This council does not have, nor does any human counsel or court have, the authority to intervene in the exercise of that relationship regardless of the venue. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Is there anyone else that would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Thank you. My name is Jen Adams. I work at 555 Michigan Avenue and chair of the board of Out on the Lakeshore at 451 Columbia. Mayor and council, I want to thank you for moving this ordinance forward for a first and soon second reading, and again for your thorough and thoughtful approach, including asking the Human Relations Commission for their comment. It's important to note a couple of things in the HRC's response. First, they made no recommendations with regard to the content of the ordinance. They were asked for comment regarding its language, and they sent the ordinance back completely intact. The Human Relations Commission has recommended nothing be eliminated and nothing be added. And that in itself is an important statement. Second, there were only three members of the eight-or-nine-member HRC who supported the recommendation for a public vote. I realize that that is a majority in a quorum situation, but it is only three. Those three voices indicated concern for the marginalized and at-risk in our community, which I very much appreciate. However, you don't protect people by asking the public to vote on whether or not you should protect people. In fact, that approach makes vulnerable people, the marginalized and at-risk in our community, much more vulnerable than they already are. This is your work now, council. The public has spoken loudly and clearly on this one. The public has spoken loudly and clearly on this one. The community isn't unanimous, but we don't need to be. What we need to be is on the other side of your vote, your passing this ordinance so that we can care for each other better than we have. This ordinance is ready to go. It's comprehensive, protecting a broad range of the marginalized and at-risk in this community, even while reiterating that First Amendment protections and religious freedom also remains intact. There's room for everyone in this. We can move forward together, human relations strengthened and improved. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Mr. Van Beek, there were some questions raised in the, both in public comment and in some of the emails that we received in regard to the HRC recommendation that we take this to, that council recommend this to go on a public ballot. And I, I know you've had some discussions and I've had some discussions with the city attorney, and perhaps we can talk through some of those things so that the general public and maybe the rest of the council has an idea of where the law stands on that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council. Yes, I was made aware of the recommendation that is part of your packet this evening from the Human Relations Commission. I did immediately send that to Ron because there were some things in that that I had questions about, and I wasn't in a place that I could access the city charter immediately. Ron did respond to that and would really like him to go through his findings on that recommendation as it relates to city charter and state law now. So thanks, Ron, for your quick investigation and for your outline for council.
You're welcome. Yes, Mayor and council, in looking at the issue, as I understand it, the Human Relations Commission voted to request that council place the issue of adopting the ordinance on the ballot for the citizens of the city to vote on. Unfortunately, that's not an option that council has under state law. The cases, there's only a couple of cases that address that issue, and they say there's no set rule against doing that, except for the fact that there's no rule that authorizes it in, for example, this situation. There are a number of things in the charter where it calls for a vote by the electorate. We've talked about those on a few occasions in the past, but, but not in adopting an ordinance. An ordinance is something that, that the charter in section 2.2 and 4.1 would delegate to council to decide on, on adopting. And the cases have said that where, where the charter does not allow for putting it to a vote, then it can't be put to a vote. The vote would be what they call an advisory vote, which has really no meaning because it would come back to you to decide whether to adopt or not adopt. Now, that's not to say that there's not any chance that this could be voted on by the public. There's two options that, that could happen, not initiated by council, but initiated by citizens, where it could be put on the ballot. One is by initiative. If council decides not to act, either voting against the ordinance or, or tabling it, citizens could circulate petitions. There's a process under our charter for this, could circulate petitions, and then if they had enough signatures, it could be, come back to council and could be put on the ballot. The other option is if council adopted the ordinance and citizens didn't like the ordinance, they could circulate petitions and have a referendum on the ordinance, and then the voters would be able to vote on whether to, to reject the ordinance or not. But those are the only two options for putting those before, before the citizens on a, on a vote. Otherwise, it does come back to council's responsibility to decide on whether to adopt an ordinance or not.
So question on that, if, so say citizens did decide to do a ballot proposal, put that, put that initiative out there, and it passed, but through the citizen vote, does it become law then at that point?
Yeah, it, it does. It's similar, it's very similar to the process where, where medical marijuana was adopted a few years ago. The, the process basically, you know, to describe it very simply would be that, that the petitions have to be approved and then circulated, and enough signatures are obtained, then it comes to council, and council can either adopt the ordinance or put it on the ballot at that point, if it doesn't adopt the ordinance. But, but again, that's initiated by petitions.
Okay, so the, so the petition process is first, it would then come, have to come before council.
Right.
If council, council could then pass the ordinance at that point, if the council chose not to put it, not to pass the ordinance at that point, then it would go to a public vote.
Go to a public vote.
Okay, and then the public vote then would, it would become an ordinance if the public voted for it at that point?
Right.
And there would not be the need for council to be engaged at, after the public vote?
Correct.
Okay. And, and I'm assuming same, similar process for a vote to rescind an ordinance, or to, if, if this council were to pass a, pass an ordinance, similar process for the public to be able to say that they didn't want it?
Exactly.
Okay.
If the public votes against it, then the ordinance is rejected and no longer.
Okay. Other questions from, or comments from council in regard to Ron and this particular issue? Great. Thank you, and thank you for the, the speed of, of putting that together. We appreciate that. It's helpful for us to know where we are.
You're welcome.
Counsel, this, this has been put to first reading. We do have a draft ordinance before us, and as part of the legislative process, we have the ability to be able to suggest changes or amendments to that. Is there any, anything, any suggestions that council would have in regard to changes to the language that the ordinance, as it currently stands?
Might as well get the discussion started.
Fire away, Mr. Chithui.
Just for discussion, there was reference last week to the interpretation and the ruling by the Supreme Court as far as definition of sex, I believe. Now, I'm going to start right out. I'm not a lawyer, I don't play one on TV. I'm probably getting into some dangerous area here, but it was also my understanding that the, some of the definitions that we had in here, sexual orientation, gender expression, gender identity, were covered in that ruling. And I need to know if I'm in, if I'm hearing that correctly, if I'm M, is one thing, if I'm not, then I'm going to stop right there.
Yeah, if I may answer that, you're close, but not quite, quite right. The, the Supreme Court made a decision interpreting federal law, which prohibits discrimination because of sex, among other classes. And, and the Supreme Court said that, that terminating an employee, they're, they're only deciding in employment context, but terminating an employee because that employee is, is homosexual or because the employee is a transgender person, they had both of those cases before them, that that would be a termination because of sex. And the definitions in the ordinance, they come from the Michigan Department of Civil Rights. That's how the Department of Civil Rights interprets those terms, that's from their model ordinance there. So it's not coming from the Supreme Court, it's coming, those definitions are coming from the Department of Civil Rights.
Is it not redundant, then?
Well, the, the Department of Civil Rights felt it would be good to have some kind of definition in their model ordinance, and that's why we, we left that in, so there's some clarity. There, there's been no interpretation that I know of that really, other than those, the model ordinance, from the Civil Rights Department, that, that really interprets what gender identity means or what sexual orientation means, for example, there. What would happen if those were not in the ordinance? Then the, the interpretations, again, used by the Department of Civil Rights, would, would apply to what discrimination because of sex would include, which I understand now is, based on their interpretive statement adopted back in 2018, includes gender identity and sexual orientation.
So as you said, we're just basically mocking, or not mocking, I'm sorry, mimicking what they're saying?
Correct.
In ours? Okay, thank you.
But, but I should be clear, too, that those definitions are not in the state statute, those are the Department of Civil Rights' interpretations.
Or subject to change, just as we had a big discussion about depending on who's in charge and what have you, correct?
It's possible, yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
Anything else? I don't want to cut you off at this point.
Go right ahead.
I'll cut you off later, maybe.
I know.
Yeah. Anyone else? Yes, Scott?
Just a, just a point of clarity, gender expression is not included in that, that interpretive language by the Civil Rights Commission nor Elliot Larson. It's not in either one of the two.
None of the three definitions are included in the Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act. The definition of sex in the Elliot Larson Act, I, I call it a partial definition because it, it only focuses on a narrow area, dealing with marital status, pregnancy, so forth. But no, those definitions are not in the statute. The one definition that you mentioned, that exact term is not used in the interpretive statement. But again, this is the, the model ordinance that the Civil Rights Department has adopted and proposed, suggested for adoption.
But isn't the point or the recommendation by council, by attorney, our attorney, to make sure that the language is very consistent with what Commission, Civil Rights Commission has put forth?
Yeah.
So that's in addition to what is already expressed in that interpretation.
So I just, I, I don't want to jump in, I want to be able to keep going, but I want to, I want a clarification on that because I think I may have heard that differently. So it's, it, this is the language that the Civil Rights Commission put out as model ordinance language.
That is.
So it came from the Michigan Civil Rights Commission. So this is, while this, this language doesn't necessarily appear in the statute, this is the language that the Civil Rights Commission, who we would be sending our, any complaints to, we're, we're modeling the language that they, that they've put out, that they've said this is language that, that we would like people to use.
That, that is exactly correct. Their, their interpretive statement refers to gender identity and sexual orientation, but their model ordinance adopted later has these three definitions in.
Okay.
Of what they, that's what they put out.
So this is, this is still Civil Rights Commission language?
Right.
Yeah.
Not voted on by the Civil Rights Commission. There's by resolution, an interpretive document that states what sex is, and this is not included. So it's not part of the formal resolution by the Civil Rights Commission. It's an extension of that. Someone added that language in. It's not been adopted by the Civil Rights Commission.
Any comment on that, Ron?
I just want to make sure that we're clear, that we're, if and when we're moving forward with this, that it's what our attorney has said before. We need to be able to defend anything that we put into statute that is very consistent with what the Civil Rights Commission or Elliot Larson and/or Supreme Court ruling is, is already called upon.
Yeah, and I agree with you completely on that. I want to make sure that whatever we do, we've got the ability to be able to defend and is language that's, that's useful moving forward.
Right. So the interpretive language as voted on by the Civil Rights Commission is law, as the state Supreme Court has said back in 1998. Commissions for that purpose can interpret what they have to do by resolution, correct? By formal act?
Yeah, that, that is, is correct. The, the commissions or departments charged with, with enforcing or applying laws that are adopted by the state have room to make interpretations of those laws. They can't interpret it to do away with clear language, but, but have room to interpret those laws, to fill in the ambiguities. And, and they did make the interpretive statement in May of 2018, saying that discrimination on account of gender identity and sexual orientation is therefore discrimination prohibited by the statute. Paraphrasing a little bit there, but those are the two terms they used, gender identity and sexual orientation. Then when they came out with the model ordinance, when the department came out with the model ordinance, they, I think, are really clarifying what they mean by gender identity by having these two separate definitions that refer to gender expression and gender identity. But gender expression is not in that interpretive statement, no.
Any other questions, Scott, at this point? Otherwise, I've got a follow-up for Ron on this. How, how does that then jibe with the, the recent Supreme Court decision? I know that the decision only had to do with employment, but how do you feel that, that language would stand up under the, the recent interpretation by the Supreme Court?
You know, it's, it's always difficult to predict what the Supreme Court's going to do in a given case. The, the decision, first off, was not a unanimous vote. You know, I'd have to go back and count again, but I think it was a 5-4 vote.
I think 6-3, I think.
Maybe 6-3.
I think 6-3, yeah.
Regardless, there, there were, you know, various justices that voted against that decision. Their justices couldn't change their position in a different case that's different factually. And so what the, what the court decided, what the majority of the court decided, is that if you discriminate against someone, well, if, to put it more simply, if you terminate an employee because they are homosexual, or you terminate an employee because of their sexual orientation, because they're transgender, that that's a termination because of sex, and that's a discrimination because of sex. Now, how would they apply these situations under these definitions? I would expect that they would come out the same way on that. But again, that's, that's my opinion. That's something that they will decide in future years, because there were definite areas that they said we are not deciding, when they gave that opinion, what the majority said they're not deciding. They said they were not deciding religious liberty issues, they would said they are not deciding issues involving, for example, locker rooms and bathrooms. But, you know, how, how you apply that going forward, I think they, they would probably say that a violation of this ordinance would be a violation of federal law, if it's a covered employer.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Yes, Scott?
So how, how do you come to that conclusion so confidently that they would interpret the same way, some of these other definitions?
Just from reading their opinion, where, where they, they said that if you, if you were to terminate an employee because they were, well, let's say a homosexual, they mentioned that, their, their language was that if you have an employee that's a male who's attracted to males, or you have a female employee that's attracted to males, and you terminate the male employee because of that, that that's a discrimination based on sex. So if you try to fit these other examples into that kind of decision-making process, I, I would expect that they would come out the same way. Now, could they come out a different way? They could.
So with your high degree of confidence, based on your explanation just now, why wouldn't the council consider limiting the definition of sex to the word just sex and not have the expanded definition, unlike we're not having an expanded definition for disability? We don't have expanded definition for religion? We don't have expanded definition for height? We don't have expanded definition for weight? So what is the reasoning, the necessity, from a legal perspective, to expand those definitions when you have the certainty and confidence that in a court, it's probably going to turn out the same way?
That would be a policy decision by council, whether they want to specifically define these terms in the ordinance or, or not. The, the more specific you are in definitions, the, the more clarity there is, although these definitions are, you're not as simple to be clear on as, as weight could be. But, but certainly that would be a policy decision by council, whether to include those definitions or not.
Yeah, so I, I looked up the definition, some of these, some of these are three, you know, three, four paragraphs long and length, trying to explain them. I suspect some other things that we're mentioning as well is probably going to have some lengthy descriptions. But because we have both interpretive law, case law, the state law, and federal law, I'm trying to wrap my hands around why we have to have such an expanded definitions within a current ordinance. It just, to me, I'm wondering why, and then if, if that... It just, to me, I'm wondering why, and then if, if that's the case, I guess I would ask my fellow councilman, and council persons, excuse me, to explain to me why we don't have the same expanded definitions for the rest of them, and what I would probably hear from our attorney and our city managers, because that's not what the model ordinance says. And we want to be consistent with the model ordinance, which we've already determined isn't consistent at the moment, that we need to reflect on that and maybe make some changes. And I would ask, wonder why we have to have the expanded definitions, which could pose potential problems for us in the future by having to go back and revisit our ordinance, and maybe re-adopting an ordinance, running the risk of not passing, passing based on the, the current trends of, of the dynamics. So I guess that would be more of a question back to my colleagues than it would be to the attorney.
I'd, I'd love to be able to answer that for you, at least from, from my perspective on it, and it's, and it's two things. One, one, it does have to do with consistency with the model ordinance. And, and while the model ordinance includes sexual, sexual expression that does not necessarily appear in the law, it is in the model ordinance that has been suggested by the Civil Rights Commission, is what they would like us to be using. Okay, so there is, there is consistency there between this and the model ordinance. That's, that's one piece of it. The other reason why, why I think it's important to have these, these three definitions in there, and I don't think that we're going to have to go back and, and readjust these, is that this has to do with defining what the, what it is that we're protecting, or what the, the people that we're protecting. Question was given to me, why, well, why aren't we defining height? And there was some discussion even last week about that. And the, the reason why we don't define height is I, I believe that most people know what height is. Okay, and we're not, we're not defining in the ordinance what discrimination based on height is. We're describing what height is. Most people know that if you're going to look at somebody's height, you're going to measure them from the bottom of the feet to the top of their head. That's, that's the definition of height that we would be looking for. We're not looking at the idea of putting in a definition that says, well, if you're over seven feet tall, or if you're under four feet tall, then you're being discriminated against. We're not looking at degree, we're looking at what the actual thing is that we're protecting here. And when you look at sexual orientation, you look at gender expression, and you look at gender identity, these for some people, as we've heard from public comment, are misunderstood, or maybe not completely understood, concepts to folks. Most people have an idea of what height and weight is. There's lots of case law out there on disability, there's not as much in this area. I think that this is going to be helpful for our residents to know the kinds of things that they should not be discriminating against. I spent a lot of years as a landlord tenant attorney, mostly working with landlords who were trying to figure out how to keep themselves from getting in trouble by discriminating against, against folks. And the clearer we could be with the definitions for them, especially in areas that they may not have been familiar with, the more helpful it was to those folks. And, and we're not, and I've, I've heard discussion in, here and in comments of, well, every day there seems like there's another letter that gets added to the list that's there. Those aren't here. What we're doing is we're saying to folks, these are three areas that you can't describe, you cannot discriminate against somebody based on this. And, and the, the Supreme Court, I think, weighed in pretty well on it, to, to tap into what, what Ron had, Ron said. This, this is a quote from the, the majority opinion. "Today we must decide whether an employer can fire somebody simply for being homosexual or transgender." The answer's clear. An employer who fires an individual for being homosexual or transgender fires that person for traits or, traits or actions. It would not have questioned in members of a different sex. Sex plays a necessary and indistinguishable role in the decision, exactly what Title VII forbids. When we're looking at this question and looking at defining it, it's those traits or actions words. That language that the court chose to use that goes back to these definitions, that we're saying to folks in this community, you can't discriminate against somebody for traits and actions in this area. And the courts, and the courts backed that up in this recent decision. So for me, it's twofold. It's one, tying in and lining up with Elliot, with, I'm sorry, Michigan Civil Rights Commission. And the other is, it's to provide that guidance to the public in an area where they might not necessarily have an innate understanding of what that is. Fire away.
I, I still think, in your explanation, there's still a lot of ambiguity because you have to look at the context in which that was presented as well. So I think there's still a lot of ambiguity, and there will continue to be ambiguity going forward in many case laws, or case issues that are presented, and you mentioned that. It's, it's going to be an open book of interpretation for a long time on these cases. For me, I think none of these people in this room, in the audience listening, cares about specifically the, how deep we define that in our ordinance. It's defined in law already. They want us to pass into ordinance that pertains to what their issues are. And we have case law that defines that. We have interpretive law that defines that. So getting all of us on the same page going forward, I think is very important. When we look at all nine of us sitting across this table. And having ambiguity in the structure of our ordinance, I think is not constructive going forward. So, those, those are the things that we're tapped to do here, sitting here, is not looking at from an emotional perspective, even though emotions do play a part of this, but we're up to, we're, we're supposed to take a critical thinking and look at this and see what could cause us issues in the future as a city. What could cause us some hardship? Because if we also include this penalty phase, we may, and if we find that there's merit in what we forward to the Civil Rights Commission, and then somehow they're overwhelmed with a number of these in the future, and it comes back to us, we should, should, even though it said may, we, we should, because we found it had merit to go forward, we probably should do something locally. And now we have to defend those, those, that activity in that language. So I think we need to be very cautious with the extent in which we're putting, the, the information we're putting in. Nothing precludes us from using the term sex. It's still consistent with the model policy. Because they say sex, and then they add what sex means by descriptive words like this. So I don't see where there's a, a deep value by this commission, or by this commission, excuse me, this council, my colleagues, to use the expanded definitions. I just don't think it's productive.
And, and my, I guess my response to that is, Scott, that people want to know that they're protected. People want to know that they're included in that. If we, if we took, if we took that argument to the, the conclusion, it would be what, what we've said, what members of this, this body have said, we don't want there to be discrimination in this community at all. We don't. And so if we went, if we went that route, the thing to do would be to say, you can't discriminate in the City of Holland. It's a great statement to make. The problem is, how do you apply that? How do you know when that's happening? We need to put some meat on those bones. And, and so I think that it is important to have these here, but let me, let me ask a, a question of you. What in these definitions, in any of these three definitions, do you have an issue with?
I don't. I just think it leaves a lot of ambiguity in its interpretation. And when we go down this road with the term sex, the word sex, it's already defined and will continue to be redefined along the way. And for us to come back here and say, gosh, you know what? I guess it's not interpreted this way. That's not what the Supreme Court ruled on it. So now we've got to take it out of our ordinance. We have to come back and revisit it.
Yeah, and I, I think I, you and I may have to agree to disagree on this. I think these three definitions take away that.
A lot of people agree to disagree with you.
Yeah, that's.
But that's, that's probably pretty typical.
No, but I, I think, I think that these take away ambiguity. I think that it provides some more clarity, not only to the people who, who need to be protected in this community, but also for those people who may not, who, we don't want them to accidentally, we don't want them to inadvertently be discriminating against folks in an area that they may not have an understanding that that's what they're doing. And providing them some definition, providing them some guidance and some guardrails, I think is helpful there.
Mayor Boxer's argument would include expanded definitions for disabilities or religion. And when we ask, when people, and even our public comment, has asked for clarity on religion and how it's protected, we don't offer expanded definitions for religion. So I think your, your argument is, is not, if you want to talk about being inclusive in all these different factors, then I think we should probably look at additional expanded language.
And, and I, and, and what I'm looking at is, is a reasonable point in the middle for that, between, between those two extremes. And I feel that we're here now. And, and again, other members of council may be, may feel differently, that it need, that there needs to be more definitions here, or there need to be fewer definitions here. But as, as you've said, you're comfortable with the definitions, you're just not necessarily comfortable with the number of definitions that we have.
I understand the definitions. I'm not uncomfortable around people with the definitions you speak of here. I'm very comfortable with the def, I understand the definitions. But I don't believe we need to expand the term sex anymore by adding the definition as part of the ordinance. Now, if we were to create a section of, a glossary, an index that somehow explains all these, we certainly can do that. And that might be under our policy, that might be in our guidance document for whomever's going to process, or create a process, whoever follows the process for forwarding these things. But to have it inside that ordinance, I think, is redundant. And I don't know that too many lawyers would say redundancy, that caused confusion is necessary in a, in a piece of ordinance.
Thanks, Scott. Any other questions, comments from council? Yeah, Mike? That was you, right?
That was me.
Okay.
Surprise, surprise. I'm having a little trouble with the fact that the Civil Rights Commission has a model ordinance, but they haven't adopted it themselves. They're suggesting, but they haven't adopted it.
Would it be the Civil Rights Commission that adopts the ordinance, adopts an ordinance, Ron?
Yeah.
Well, in, in their policy, as you said, they're suggesting that as an ordinance comes out, this is what, how it should read. But in their policy, or whatever term you want to use, and you can correct me, I'm, I'm not, I'm not bashful enough to be corrected, they have not gone to this extreme. Why? They don't use the same language, they have not adopted what they are enforcing. In, okay, layman's terms. They have the law. They created the law that they passed. Is this language in their law? It is not. They have made great recommendation that said, if you're going to adopt a, an ordinance, this is what you should put in there. That's why I'm having a little bit of a problem, because we are going to them to defend this. So if it's good for the goose, why is it good for the gander? Pretty simple question.
So you're suggesting that if we pass this ordinance, and somebody made a claim based on discrimination, based on sexual expression, that's in the model ordinance, that Civil Rights Commission might not defend that case for us?
What would they base that defense on? They don't have the definition. So if, and, and, and we're splitting hairs here, but to make a point, again, I have no problem, very similar to Scott, I have no problem with these three and with the, with the definitions in there. Don't, don't interpret me wrong there. But then, under color, we got the one word. Under nationality, we got the one word. Because those have been defined, correct?
Over years, over years, as, as Scott said, years of case law and people trying to, trying to work through ambiguities.
And, and granted, a lot of this stuff, some people are going to say, no, this has been going on for a long time, but as far as legal recourse, it's relatively new. Agreed?
I'd agree.
Okay, all right. So I can understand where you're coming from to want to have it in there because it's new territory. But from a defense standpoint, we have it defined with a one word, just like we do with color, just like we do with education, just like we do with familial status, just like we do with, if you want to assume height and weight. We know what those definitions are, we don't define the parameters, but we know what the definitions of height is. We know what the definition of weight is. Again, I'm looking from a defensible standpoint. That's, so why they don't have it in their law, for lack of better terms, layman's terms, forgive me, and why we have the redundancy?
And, and I don't have a, I don't have an answer to that question, and I don't know, yes, Mr. Van Beek?
So I will answer part of it, and again, from the perspective of what the direction was from council to the manager and the attorney. It was to come back with options, not recommendations, but there was also a very clear third part that we haven't discussed a lot, which was along the lines of limiting our exposure. So I think what Ron and I did when we did our investigation and understood that case law exists retrospectively, but quite frankly, probably there will continue to be cases on this, we felt, and we got recommendations from other communities, and we got recommendation from the Michigan Department of Civil Rights. And they gave us what their estimation was, the best thing that a local community that's investigating this could adopt. And largely that was around so that we could limit exposure, so that the city either would not over emphasize or create additional law by creating additional definition, but also on the other side of things, would not include certain things that would possibly create exposure. That was the direction that you gave to us. So what's before you is what we felt was the best thing that aligned with what is out there currently, and would limit the city's exposure to the greatest extent possible, so that if a case would come forward, it wasn't something that you were creating new law. So the definitions and the lack of definitions basically aligned with those recommendations.
Please don't hear me saying, please don't hear me saying that I am finding fault in what you did because you and Ron followed to letter of the law or letter of the request, what we asked for. I, I appreciate that then, I appreciate it now. And as you said earlier, this is now, or Ron said earlier, this is a policy decision on how that language comes down. You did exactly what we asked, exactly what we asked, and you gave us the parameters, and you gave us the definitions, and you gave us what, what other places are doing. I, I couldn't be happier with the request that was made and the results that we got. Now it comes down to this nine here to define if we feel comfortable with, with the proposal, not recommendation, because you didn't do a recommendation, but a proposal that you have put out here with the facts that you found. And there's some discussion going on now with the specific words. Again, not what you guys did, don't, please don't hear me there.
Yep.
That, that is not being said whatsoever. We ultimately, and you through us, ultimately have to live with what this decision is, we have to be comfortable as nine of us, as, as comfortable as we can be on this situation, that we can go ahead and defend what we're putting out there as our law. And that's all I'm questioning at this point, okay?
And Mike, totally appreciate that, and I wasn't reacting to what we brought forward, but I heard a question in the last conversation of why did we bring forward what we did? And I thought it'd be helpful to at least understand our rationale of why we brought forward what we did, particularly as it related to limit exposure. Because we felt this was the best thing that got you close to the discussion that you're having right now.
Okay, thank you.
Quincy?
Yes, I, I strongly agree with the argument that Mr. Corbin came, came with. I guess my, one, one of my questions is, so after Keith F- I guess my, one, one of my questions is, so after Keith, after what you stated about that, and I guess this would be a question for Ron, if we were to push a complaint to the state level, what would be the difference with the terminology that is current in the ordinance versus the sex, just plain sex in the ordinance?
I wouldn't expect there to be any difference in, in the way that, that's handled. One of the things, I was just looking back on the Civil Rights Department's website while, while everyone was talking. The Civil Rights Commission did adopt that model ordinance. It's not something that just someone in an office somewhere said, hey, this is what we want to put out for communities. They, they looked at, um, at the ordinances adopted by various communities, and they came up with this model ordinance that was approved by the commission. Now, why did they say three definitions in the model ordinance, and they only mentioned two of them in their interpretive statement? Um, I couldn't tell you. Uh, maybe there's someone there that could tell us. Um, I suspect that it's something that was written at different times. Um, maybe they meant the, um, the two items, uh, thought the two items in their interpretive statement covered all three of the definitions. I don't know. But, but it is something that the Civil Rights Commission did approve, uh, the model ordinance. And they approved it because of concern that there were, I think, they mentioned at the time thirty communities that had adapted ordinances, and they mentioned that they varied greatly in structure and, and what they cover. And boy, that is true, um, from, from what we've looked at. And, um, and so I would expect that they, because they adopted this, uh, proposed model ordinance, that they would apply it the same way, whether those terms, definitions are in there or not.
Okay, so ju- just to be clear then, so you're saying that there would not be any difference between having the definitions spoken out or laid out in the ordinance versus just having sex in the ordinance?
At this point in time. Now, is it possible that ten years from now, the Civil Rights Department could have, the Civil Rights Commission could have different persons on it and adopt a different interpretation? That's always possible. Um, is it possible that the legislature could say, we don't agree with what they're doing, and we are going to amend the statute? That's always possible as well. But under current, the current status, uh, I would expect that they're going to enforce the, uh, pursue a, a claim, uh, based on a complaint, uh, and using the same definitions that we have in, in this model ordinance.
With, with just the word sex?
With or without, right.
Okay.
So I just want to clarify Quincy and Mike and Scott, when you say not including the definitions, you're, you're suggesting removing the language, gender expression, sexual orientation, gender identity, and, and lumping those into the word sex and removing the definitions?
For me, that is absolutely correct.
Okay.
I guess I pose the question for you, why, why it was necessary. And I haven't heard that from, but only a few people, well, only from one.
Yeah, well, I, I find adding the definitions to actually, I'm completely comfortable including the language and the definitions, because I think it actually takes away ambiguity. Because as, as Mayor pointed out, these are definitions that are not standardized across, across our experiences. And so to add additional clarification for those three categories, I think it helps us to, it absolutely takes away ambiguity for me. So I would disagree. I would want to include those three and the definitions as well.
I, I guess for me, I, you already know where I stand on that, but as, as I look at this, and again, and you use the term height, I, I understand heights, but when you look at age, you look at race, you look at national origin, and you look at color, um, and even source of income, the, the definitions for those are not as simple as height, from your toes or the bottom of your foot to the top of your head. There's, there's a lot in that, and we don't touch any of that for religion. We don't touch any of that for race. We don't touch any of that. Nationality or national origin, we don't touch that, or color. So all of a sudden, it's, we touch sex, and why? I, I don't see or understand why we would do that when it's not done in any of those other ones.
Yeah, Nikki?
I would say, and I agree with Councilwoman Raymond, it adds clarity. I think it's a measure of our ignorance. Sex is sex. We're not used to talking about gender expression as a cisgender female married to a man, having children, dressing in a skirt. Everybody, yeah, this is usual, this, we get this. Other people, uh, maybe, uh, look like a female, you know, it's born a certain way, biologically a certain way, but express themselves in a different way. This kind of thing helps clarify, and I just think we just don't know enough. And, and the other point is, we, you don't create an ordinance or a law with, if you do it correctly, if you're doing it, uh, as, as I feel that our city is doing it, with the idea of we might get sued. This might go to court. It's the right thing to do. We've waited a long time. We, you don't get refused housing because you're straight. So why would you not have an ordinance, uh, that would allow you to get, you know, refused housing because you're homosexual, or your gender expression is something else than what you are or look like? So I think it's time to do, I mean, it is the right thing to do, and if it goes to court, I think this, uh, ordinance is strong enough that it can hold up to whatever is thrown at it.
So, I think if we do make laws, it would be very, very foolish of us not to take into account that it's a possibility we could get sued. That's foolish, in my personal opinion. Because no one does anything without thinking of legal ramifications.
Exactly, and that's why I say this is strong enough.
Also, speaking about what you said, if you meet another black person and you just assume he's African-American, well, he may be from a completely different area. He could be Caribbean, he could be from South America. You could see a person with a turban on his head and assume he's a Muslim. But that's not the case. He could be a Christian, he could be an atheist even. So when you say it's based off, we don't know, well, anything on this list is, we don't know at times.
And we have an ordinance, and so if I was going to rent, if you came and wanted to rent, uh, my rental home, I would, I could not refuse you because you are a person of color, or what I thought was your gender identity. It doesn't matter if you're Caribbean, or Jamaican, or Mexican.
Let me make it a, a real clear statement here. I, I'm not debating the merit that this is something that needs to happen where they need protections. I'm not debating that. What I am debating is the expansion on sex, not the expansion on race, not the expansion on age, not the expansion on national origin, not the expansion on color, not the expansion on religion. But I am debating the expansion on sex. I am not debating if the LGBT community needs protection, equal protection as everyone else. That is undebatable. I'm not debating that.
Then, and I'll just say, I agree with Councilwoman Raymond in saying, to us, or to me, it adds clarity. To you, it does not.
That's correct. It doesn't to me.
Okay, we'll leave it at that.
Yeah, and, and so, and, you know, with respect to the lawyers in the room, please correct me, but it's, it's my understanding that the person potentially being discriminated against has the burden of proof. So you're, you're fired, I'm fired from a job because I'm female. I think it's because I'm female. I have the burden of proof for, to, to, so I can go and, and file a complaint. So there's, but if we, if we try to define all those, I think it's different for everybody, right? So you couldn't say, we could, we could define age. So how would we define age? Uh, my dad was fired because he was too old, but there might also be a job where somebody's fired because they're too young. So there's, so I think that the burden of proof lands on the individual who is feeling discriminated or believes they're discriminated against, and in that way, the, the def- those extra definitions are defined. Those other categories are defined. And, and so I, we, it seems like we're just going to disagree about whether or not sex actually includes all of that. I, I think it's not, it's not clear enough for the other ones, and I think that it becomes met, it becomes very muddy if we start to expand the definitions of all those other categories.
But we are setting, but we are setting precedents by expanding on sex though, right?
I don't know what you mean by setting a precedent.
Well, you, you said we shouldn't expand on these other ones.
Yep.
But we make an exception, for one. So we, in my opinion, are setting a precedence to expand on these other ones.
But, but Quincy, you just said you don't, you firmly believe that these groups deserve the same protections as everyone else.
Yes.
How can you provide those protections for those folks unless they're identified in the ordinance?
They're not identified under the word sex?
I, I don't think in what most peoples, as, as Lynn said, in our, in our common experience, as a, as a guy who grew up in the seventies and eighties, that would not, that, the definition of sex, until the Supreme Court just ruled a few weeks ago, I would not have, I would not have thought to include them in that language. I wouldn't have.
But they are included.
So to cut, Mayor Box, to count on that is that it is in law, and so it is covered, um, both at the local, or, excuse me, state interpretive law, as well as Elliot Larson, the state law. And yes, just recently on a federal level.
And I don't have any problem clarifying that for the members of the public.
Okay, well.
If, if we, if we say that we want to protect them, why aren't we willing to say that we want to protect them?
We are. We're saying the term, we're passing a discrimination ordinance that includes the word sex, and that is interpreted already. I don't see where that's a problem that, that we're debating it. It's already interpreted as a part of the law. We're just asking, for some reason, we're asking to include all this additional language, expanded language, to, uh, to appease, what, maybe, uh, to help the ignorant, like me, because I don't understand it. Apparently I'm ignorant. I don't understand it. That's why we got to explain it in law to me. It's already been interpreted. So, but just to change a little course, because I think the only way I can understand how this might, I'm going to quickly bring this down, is if I'm having a problem with this, what staff might, I mean, what about process? Can we just, like, turn a little bit on the process? What are we thinking about process when it comes to this, this, uh, particular piece of, this ordinance?
I think, I think we've explained that pretty clearly already in, in previous meetings, that if someone has a claim, they come to the city, they fill out the form to make a claim, and it goes to the Civil Rights Commission. Our staff is not going to be the one that is going to be interpreting it, that's going to be dealing with those things. It's going to the Civil Rights Commission.
Who would the city is taking that? What's the process? Have we developed a process yet for, before we adopt an ordinance?
Sorry, Scott, I would agree more with the mayor in that the process is people could, um, complete something, and they wouldn't have to do it with us, but in the model ordinance and other places that we've talked about, that people quite often are more comfortable, we see this in surveys everywhere, they're more comfortable interfacing with government close to them rather than far from them. So what we've provided to you upon request is a process that is quite simple. They would just complete some information, and then that we would send that on to the Michigan Department of Civil Rights and make that connection. I've called it a warm transfer. And that if, at that point, the Michigan Department of Civil Rights maybe wants more information or needs more information, or wants to do other clarity with the person that's submitting the claim, um, then that would be between the Michigan Department of Civil Rights and that person.
Okay, very pointed question here, if I may interpret, because we're dancing the subject here. What department is going to be receiving that document when it's turned in, if it is chosen to be done through the city? And the second part of that, because we're going to get there very quickly somewhere down the road, is if it is turned back to us, what department is going to handle the process of defending the case or adjudicating, or whatever the case may be? I'm assuming the second part, and help me if I'm wrong here, I'm assuming the second part would be the city attorney's office. But I got to believe that someplace along the line, staff, whether it be the, um, Esther, or whether it be the police department, or whether it be the city attorney, or whatever, we, I, I don't think you've got that so clearly defined here as to what the process is. Okay, help me out.
So on the first page, one of the definitions, department shall mean the city department of human relations. And I've been asked before, it would not go to the commission, it'd go to the department, in this case.
Staff.
We have a person that's the director of that department. But it also says, or a department designated by the city manager, which is my responsibility, as part of the city manager's administrative plan.
Yeah.
So that allows for some needed flexibility, where if we had a vacancy in the office or anything like that, or if there was some type, you know, lots of different situation, it gives flexibility to me that I would be able to do that.
Yeah.
Um, then later, when it talks about prosecution, um, it says the city may, not shall, which is the language that I always like to see, may initiate an action to prosecute a violation of this chapter on the basis of investigation, um, initiated by a complaint filed under section twenty-five-five, so it goes on there. And then again, may talks about that, but, um, you know, there's an, there's a situation where we'd, basically you entrust that to me, and then ultimately with the city attorney's office, just like we do with other things, specifically because we've named that a municipal civil infraction.
Yeah, thank you.
We have code violations that we deal with all the time, don't we? And a, and a process that we deal with almost on a daily basis.
And we don't name necess- we don't name in most of those instances in the ordinance specifically the person or the title that does that. That is something that is entrusted to me. You're one employee, and then I use the resources available to pursue that.
But there's typically a path, civil infractions, uh, uh, building infractions, zoning infractions, and so on and so forth. There are specific departments that handle those. You don't see every one of them. Uh, it's just, it's part of the way of life, because that's their specialty.
Mm-hmm.
Just wanted to get whose specialty this was going to be, and if it was going to be, and I have forgotten about that, thank you very much. But was it going to be a committee, or was it going to be a staff member, or designated staff member, if you will? But, okay, that helps.
Other questions, comments by council? Yeah, Lynn?
So, um, I, I wondered, uh, Ron, if you could clarify, because I know that this is, this was brought up a cup, uh, at a couple of meetings and certainly in public comment. At, I, I, I think I understand why, um, when we're looking at exemptions, and I'm scrolling here, because I can't seem to find it. Um, when we're looking at exemptions, it specifically lists religious educational institutions. And then at the bottom, and because I think what's been, uh, what's been expressed here at the, on the dais and also in the public comment, is that, um, it's not specific enough in, uh, section twenty-five dash nine of, to include any, uh, religious institutions such as churches and, and other places of worship. So I wonder if you could just reiterate the, what those mean, so that there can be some clarification there?
Yeah, well, looking at, at section twenty-five-nine at the end there, um, again, that language comes right out of the mono, excuse me, out of the model ordinance. And, um, and what it's intended to do is, is to, to make a statement that, again, is true whether it's there or not. And that is that, that the ordinance is not to be interpreted to interfere with a person's or a religious institution's free exercise of religion is protected by the First Amendment, uh, of, of the Constitution. Backing up, you mentioned the exceptions in, in here, and there are those exceptions. Backing up, you mentioned the exceptions in, in here, and there are those exceptions, um, scrolling back to, um, to find them. And, um, there, there's various exceptions, including any conduct that would be exempted under state law from the discrimination process, and so, um, the, the intent there is just to make sure that we match up with state law.
Ron, there was just a question, so Quincy was asking, specifically, that last section, Quincy, you're gonna wanna look at twenty-five dash four, item G.
Twenty-five-four G?
Right.
Correct.
So any conduct exempt under state law would be exempt under this ordinance? Again, we're trying to match it up as closely as we can with, with state law. And matching it up that way is, is the best way to make sure that we can defend the ordinance, should there be a challenge to it.
I have a question. Do you see any loopholes in that, matching it up with the state? Or I guess the state, what they have?
Loopholes, you mean like, would allow someone to discriminate on some basis?
To, I, I guess to have a religious institute sued?
Uh, you know, it should be clear that a religious institution can be sued, whether or not you adopt the ordinance, uh, based on discrimination, and whether they have a defense under state law or not is, is certainly another issue, and, and there, the courts have made decisions in various cases, that in this case, there is a defense, and in this other case, there is not a defense. It's an area that still is, is very much, I think, up in the air. Uh, the, the platitudes, the, the principles are there, but the, the application of those principles to specific situations is pretty much up in the air. Uh, just like, you know, the Supreme Court felt the need to say, in, in their just recent decision, that they're not deciding, uh, a religious liberties-type defense, uh, to, to sex discrimination in employment. And, um, and so, you know, that, that is a clear signal that that is still something that's out there to be interpreted by the courts and decided. And, um, so it's, it really is not possible to give a specific example, uh, but what we wanted to do is, again, match this up with state law, so that we're not attempting to prohibit something allowed by state law, or federal law, uh, because it refers to federal law as well here. Um, I know it's not a real definite answer, but, but it's rather difficult to give it a definite answer in that area.
Yeah, I have a question. Um, do we have any ordinances that haven't ever been challenged in the city?
You know, we have a lot of ordinances, and a lot of them have not been challenged, actually. There, there are specific ones that get challenged, uh, you know, once in a while. Um, you know, I, I tried to think of one I could say definite, definitively. You know, we have a, a ordinance on no parking that's actually been challenged, uh, as not being invalid. Uh, there, there's challenges that can happen, that doesn't mean that they, they will succeed. I think the only challenge I can remember succeeding was this one on the six cars parked on a lot issue. Um, I, I, I think that, uh, in the almost forty years that I've been here, uh, I, I'm not sure that there's been any others that have succeeded, not, not that I can think of on the spur of the moment here.
Thank you.
But yeah, there's challenges off and on, uh, at, at different times.
Thank you.
Questions, comments, yeah, Roll?
Yeah, so ultimately, just one question, I think. Um, we, last, last week I mentioned, uh, kinda my, my understanding, and, um, I think, just, you know, somewhat agreeing, uh, maybe almost entirely agreeing with, uh, Mr. Corbin's uh, kinda position and thinking and rationale, because I, I've, you know, I find you, Scott, uh, to be pretty objective, you know, and which I, is something I appreciate. Um, and so when we were looking at these definitions and seeing how that is, you know, I, I think I asked the question about, uh, sex being elaborated, right, with these three other terms, and, you know, um, why that was the case, maybe. Um, I think, you know, I have, I have had that same concern, as to why we elaborate a little bit on that, and not these others. But I, I do appreciate also yours, uh, Mayor, and kinda your, your response to that, because it has given me a, kind of a point to pause and consider, that it does, you know, it does clarify things a little bit more. It makes, I think, both sides, uh, kinda come to an understanding as to, you know, whether, whether or not you agree, and, you know, I think part of what makes this challenging, even amongst us, is, you know, our controversial, it's controversial because of our various perspectives, even, even to whether or not, uh, you know, the, the definitions are valid, um, or what they mean, you know, like what they mean for us, our, kind of our, our personal faith convictions, or whatever, maybe just our, the context that we grew up in, and we just weren't exposed to it, and, and so we're still, you know, kinda rubbing up against that. Um, so it is, it is controversial, right? And so like, I think we're experiencing that rub of what all this means, but I do feel like, and this is kinda where I'm, may, maybe deviating a little bit, you know, from where, where Scott, you kinda, or is, or have been, that it does, it does kind of clarify things, you know, for those for whom otherwise, it would be ambiguous. I mean, you, you wouldn't know what that means, you wouldn't know if you are discriminating, or, or to what, which extent. Nope, I'll probably, I don't even know if I should say that. Um, almost, almost to what extent you can discriminate, right? I mean, like, it, it kinda draws a line, like, this is, not that you should discriminate, right? And, and this is another thing that I think is worth, and, and needed to be said here is, is, you know, I believe, um, with, with my full conviction, that all of us desire, you know, for people to feel welcome in this city, that we all have a heart and compassion for each and every person represented, uh, in, in this, in this space, and who watch us online, who have been outside, um, and those not, and those who are even completely unaware that this is even happening, uh, 'cause those exist as well. Um, so I do, I do believe that all of us want to get to this place where we can defend and protect the most vulnerable in our city. I think, um, getting to that place of what we agree, what that should look like, um, is, is certainly, kind of the tension, uh, that, that we're in. Um, and, you know, um, just, I guess my, my one question at the end of all this, is with these definitions, right, and Mr., Mr. Hekstra, um, kinda brought this up, and this has been a, kind of a case before, an argument, is, you know, on the flip side, with the whole locker room thing, how does, how does having this ordinance in place impact us locally, as to what we can or can't do, or should or shouldn't do?
Again, that, those are, are things that are, are not really decided by the courts yet, um, and so, and, and that's, again, one reason why, eh, the model ordinances and, and the proposals is intended to, to refer complaints over to the Department of Civil Rights, so they can apply it on a statewide basis uniformly. Uh, and, uh, I guess also, so if there's any litigation over that, that is gonna be involving the Department of Civil Rights, and them defending that position on there. Uh, that's an issue that's, that's not decided by the courts, and, and I think I mentioned earlier, maybe not, but, um, the Supreme Court in their, their just recent decision said that specifically, they're not deciding that issue, uh, 'cause it's not an issue that was before them. So that's something that, that will be probably disputed in the courts over the next several years. Um, you know, the Civil Rights Act that the Supreme Court interpreted was adopted in nineteen sixty-four, and they're just getting to the point of making that interpretation of, of, you know, homosexuals or transgender persons being protected, uh, under the statute in two thousand twenty. Uh, so some of these things take a while to, to percolate through the courts, till, uh, the right decision, or right case goes, comes up for the court to decide. And, um, and so this religious dispute, or religious liberties defense, is decided a number of cases, uh, but it is, is something that, the final decision on that has not been made yet by the Supreme Court. Um, you know, the, the state, or, excuse me, the federal government has adopted a statute, uh, the, the Religious Freedom Restoration Act, uh, and the courts have looked at that, and, and, you know, made it very clear that in order to burden someone's exercise of their sincerely held religious beliefs, that the government has to have a very compelling interest. Uh, and so, you have to try and apply that kinda standard in any religious liberties-type case.
So, so in the situation, I mean, again, kinda going back to the locker rooms, bathrooms, just 'cause that's, I think, a, a easy example to kind of, where the tension, you know, kinda meets. Um, so le, legally, I mean, there's, there's nothing, like, that has to be decided, kind of, between the two parties, or the, you know, the policy of the institution or the organization that's willing to, or not willing to accommodate, and then if that's not enough, or that's not, you know, it doesn't meet the need, then it would go to the, the state, or ultimately, the Supreme Court, or whatever, but it would kinda be out of our hands, or at which point, would it come back to us, or would it not? I mean, it's, it'd, it'd be a long journey regardless, right?
Sure.
I mean, it'd be a long process, so we probably wouldn't hear from that, who knows, uh, you know, for how long.
I would not expect that to come back to us, is, the rights department would make, would do an investigation, if they get a complaint, they do an investigation, they, they contact the, if it's an employment situation, the employer, if it's public accommodation, they contact the, uh, business, and, and they ask for information, and then they try to, to, uh, mediate it between the parties, and try to resolve that dispute, and ultimately, then there could be legal action that's taken, uh, against a, a business or an employer, and then the courts are gonna have to decide, uh, that issue. Uh, an individual could bring their own civil rights action, uh, private action against employer, or place of public accommodation, and then, then again, the courts decide, uh, the issue, and interpret and apply the statute, uh, and, and that's what would, would happen here.
Anyone else? Yeah, Jay?
Assuming the horse is here, what is our takeaway here? Not to beat a dead horse, I think we, we chewed this pretty well now, we've been chewing it for a while. What is, what can we do? I've heard, I heard on the radio, there's a really good chance that we could put it on first reading on August, I believe it's five or six.
Uh, yeah, final, final reading would be-
Final reading would be August.
On, on the fourth, yeah.
Fourth or first?
Yeah.
Thank you, okay.
I'm gonna be out of town that week, so I don't know if we could push it back a little further or not. I would like that.
Um, well, my question was, um, we're not here next week, right? That was a regular meeting.
Correct.
So we could, we could-
It's the fifth Wednesday next week.
So, we end this discussion, and it just goes on the, uh, uh, August five agenda, and we call a vote. Is it that simple?
Could be.
Is that where we are?
Typically, I, I'm not as experienced as you, or, or frankly, anybody but other than two people here, but my understanding is, we kind of give a head nod of where we wanna, if we wanna move something like this, and have it put on, be put on the agenda.
I, I, you know what, I think this is great discussion, um, I like the fact that some of us have some really kind of legalistic ways of approaching things, that, I'm not one of those, I, I wish I had more of that in me, um, but I, I do, I've had, I've been here long enough to have two recommendations from our, um, uh, how, uh, recreation, or, uh, HRC commissions, I've had two of them. Um, I, I didn't, I wish someone was here from that group tonight, I don't know what, exactly what that looked like, and why that, I guess I'd like to hear more about that, I don't have to, but it's very curious to me. But, I would go back, I would put more stock in what happened roughly nine years ago, where we took one year, we took a whole year of public comments, and public meetings, and it was on the cover of the Holland Sentinel, every time, we had more public dialogue. And the commission at that time, after all of that, and all the evidence, and all the things that came out, and the preponderance of people who said, "This is something we'd really like to do." Um, it was really an overwhelming thing. Now I go back to what we've experienced here in the last six months, once this council said, "We think this is a priority for us, we need to look into it again," we've done a good job of doing that, I think. Um, I'm astounded at how many people have come up forward and stated their purpose. Um, the preponderance of people who've spoken are in favor of this thing. Um, so, I don't know how, I don't know if, maybe we ought to put up an org chart of the city of Holland, and who's in charge here? How many people of the city of Holland have to demonstrate to, I hear it, uh, there's no doubt in my mind that this community wants to see this happen. Um, the org chart says the citizens are in charge, and if this were any other subject in this, and we would be blown over by how much, then we'd be, it'd be a no-brainer. But I think, Roll, you bring up a good, a good point, is there's a faith component to this thing, largely, almost exclusively, the people who are not as excited about giving rights to the LGBT community, um, have a faith component that for some reason, they think it's gonna take something away. For the, I res, I, I don't know if I respect that, I just don't get it, I don't get it. We live in a community that talks about one of the greatest, kindest communities on the planet, um, it just seems like such, such a positive thing that we can do to make a statement for this community. Not preserve where we've been for the last twenty, thirty, forty years, 'cause it hasn't been that pretty in a lot of, in a lot of respects when it comes to this, but laying the groundwork for the next ten, twenty, thirty years forward, and all the generations that are gonna come after us, and all the different faiths that are gonna come here from Tallahassee, Michigan. The, the Christian Reformed Church, they were, we're not all coming from the Christian Reformed Church anymore, or the Reformed Church in America. The Reformed Church is in the middle of a huge discussion about whether or not we should be, uh, open and accepting to this community of people who've been with us for the ages. We killed, I think it was Galileo, the faith community killed Galileo, 'cause he had the, he had the gall to suggest that the earth revolved around the sun. They killed him for it. There's hundreds of stories about that, with the faith community, always kind of being last to be, last to be the ones that are most welcoming, and that's the most confusing thing about this town to me, is it seems to me, the people that should be the most embracing and accepting, tend to be the ones that are the most steadfast in their face, in their faith, and tend to be less able to just accept people for who they are. Too many rules, too many gotta be like me, doesn't fit the mold, we'll get used to it, the world's turning, the world's evolving, we're right in the middle of it. This is about the next twenty years, this is not about trying to preserve who we've been, and why we are, and what we're trying to protect in Holland, Michigan. This is about a vision and leadership, and it's not our job to make sure we do the right thing here. And like I say, I'm a victim of sitting here too long, and I've said this before, and I'll say it again, if you still have some inkling that this is not the right thing to do, then you don't know the damage that was done to this community when we failed this thing ten years ago. Either you're not talking to people, you don't know the, what, what's going on in the real world, you're missing something, I don't know what it is, I respect all of us, we're all friends, we'll all be friends after this, I don't know how we can, we can beat this horse, and, and continue to just ask questions about human rights. What's our job? I'm not here to change hearts and minds, we're here to protect everybody that's in this community. What's our faith, what's one of our favorites saying? Health, safety, and welfare. That's all we're talking about? You don't have to lay somebody's faith problems on this whole equation, 'cause faith comes in all different colors. So, uh, yeah, if I seem frustrated, I'm a little frustrated. I listened to some of this stuff ten years ago. Take more time. Do, get, get clear. Let's, may I remind us of two other examples where we, we took the bold step to ask for on-street parking? That took six years. We were gonna have to bring on more policemen, there were gonna be huge crashes in the, in every night, between two and five AM, nobody's gonna get their trash picked up, none of it happened. Can I remind us once again about short-term rentals? Oh my God, there'll be so many short-term rental people living in Holland, we won't have enough people to serve on our boards and commissions. That was a legitimate concern. You know what? Not one- what? Not one complaint. Not one thing. We're getting hung up on wording about getting sued and who might happen and what. Wow. Just, let's just be human. Let's just do the right thing. Let's take this town into the next kind of future that we're all evolving into and become known as a place that's open and welcoming and does the right thing and loves everybody instead of this reputation that we have about being unwelcoming. Because it exists. If you don't think it exists, you're not hanging out with the right people. Sorry. So I'll go back to, I was planning on saying nothing. Usually happens. But my question is, if any, and once people are done talking about this tonight, we don't have to do a thing and we're just going to vote on August four or five or six. Well, I should know that Wednesday. I don't, I can't remember. But two weeks from tonight, right? That's the plan.
Out of respect for, for Councilman Byrd, I, I think it would, because he's stated that he'd like to be here for that vote and can't, and can't be here in two weeks.
That's correct.
I'd, I'd like to push it to the 19th. That would be, that would be my suggestion. That, that would be the, that's the second regular meeting in August is on Wednesday, the 19th.
Because now would be a good time to get it right. We do have a meeting on the 5th.
And Quincy, you cannot be here for that one.
That's correct. I will not be here the week of the 5th.
Okay. And I, I, I think out of respect, out of respect for you Quincy and for, for all members that we've got, all of us have the opportunity to be here for the meeting where this, this vote takes place. Any objection to getting it on the agenda for the 19th? All right. All right. Any other comments from council members?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Hookstra.
I apologize for my tardiness. Actually, part of me hoped you'd be past this by the time I got here.
You needed to be a little bit more tardy.
I didn't work that out very well. I don't want to say a lot. There's two things that occur to me as I sit here and listen to all of the great comments that you all have put forth. And I appreciate them all. It's helpful to understand where we all collectively are on this and what we think. With regard to definitions, it would be great. I think we all would like clarity and definiti in life in general. It would be great if that's the way that life actually worked out. But life is full of ambiguity and lack of definition. And that's part of what we, part of our existence. I think if you would compare what the general idea of free men, and I use that term deliberately, in the 1700s as compared to now, we would probably agree that there's a difference in understanding of what free men actually meant. Today, there would be expanded to not just free men, but free women, free people. And that understanding has evolved over time, as have a number of other things. Discernment is an evolutionary process. And part of that process involves our judiciary system. You know, you can, you could use any number of examples of how clarity has come through, you know, a discovery process. And some of that involves going to court about stuff because that's where we argue about a lot of things in a formal fashion. So it would be great if we could have the perfect ordinance example here where everything was clear. There would never, in the history of mankind going forward, be any question about what anything meant. But that's extremely unlikely. So I think to live with that tension is okay. Because the second thing that occurs to me as I sit here, and this may seem very overly simplistic, but the thing that comes to mind is the thing that I think about when we're considering any issue that requires a decision. You know, who stands to gain? Who's going to lose? Who's it's going to help? Who's it going to help and who's it going to hurt? We can sit here for a long time and debate terms and semantics. And frankly, that delay is not going to hurt me at all. And it's not going to hurt you and probably no one else on this board. But in the meantime, there are those in our community who we've heard testimony from, who do suffer, who have suffered 10 years and beyond and continue to suffer because we haven't taken action. And again, you know, what we decide may have a huge impact and may have a limited impact. We may have to revisit it. There are gaps in our charter because we've changed stuff. We might have to do that. But as Gandhi said, what we can do, we will try to do. We have an opportunity to make a progressive step here, and progressive is not a bad word, frankly, actually. We have the opportunity to do something to help a large group in our community to feel welcomed. And I'm getting a little uncomfortable with that word because we use it so much. I guess I would prefer to say to feel valued. And in my mind, the opportunity, the opportunity to do something right now outweighs the opportunity to do nothing in hopes of something better down the road. So those are just two things that occurred to me tonight. I'm ready to move forward. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, Dave. Anyone else?
Yes.
Mr. Tethouie.
First of all, next, at our next business meeting, we're more than likely going to have to, because it's going to have to be on the agenda since we already noticed it, we're going to have to make a motion on there to postpone it to the next business meeting. So just be prepared for that. It's already been noticed. There's my CTO hat, so that's coming off.
Thank you for that.
Jay, I appreciate what you said. I took to heart what you said because they were directed at me. I don't care. You and I have been friends for a long time and we don't pull any punches. But I will never apologize for discussion that we have around this group, around this table. We need to have it. If we don't have it, we're not doing our job. We need to have it because we are representing 30, 30,000 plus people around here. The nine of us don't have the same mindset. I'm sorry, I don't see it as easily and it should be a slam dunk as, as you do and some other people do. There's a number of situations. Parking, the short-term, our, our two favorite little subjects there. But as I said, when we passed the short-term rentals, the reason, one of the reasons, and I think you agreed with me, was that because we took the conservative approach to it. We made sure that what we did was the right thing, was defensible, was at least honorable and worked for everybody with the concerns that were out there. I am absolutely fantastically appreciative that we did not have a concern. We did not have a complaint. I'm glad you proved me wrong or the ordinance proved me wrong. I said that then, I'll say it again.
You're welcome.
I was wrong. But I'm glad in the process that we had. So I don't ever want to have anybody apologize or anybody ridiculed or anybody questioned why we have the conversation that we do around this deal. It's, it's, that's the nature of this beast. And I apologize to a certain extent, the fact that you that already had your minds made up and think that it's a slam dunk had to live through this. But there's a few of us that also have constituents out there that need to have explanation to that don't see the same way you do. We need to have that justification or some reasoning to go back to them. So Nikki, you, you brought up something about if we're making ordinances worry about getting sued, your doggone bet you we got to worry about that. We have to make sure. It's not the only reason. Don't, don't get me wrong.
Right.
We have to make sure that it's defensible.
Correct. And that's why I had the faith in our attorney.
I, but the policy comes to us.
Correct.
Is what it boils down to. So Dave, thanks for cooling me off just a little bit. I was getting a little.
That's his job.
And Kristin's here and I didn't want to blow up and at Jay, well, she's here. So I am, I'm done.
Brother Mike, may I respond to that last thing you just said?
You're sure, man.
Reminds me of when, um, previous council member was sitting here and I was getting torqued off about something. I don't even remember what it was. Brother Bob turned to me and said, brother, don't sit in your anger. So you're cool, man.
Any other country? Quincy? Yes.
So one of the things that, um, that keeps getting brought up is data. So for our next presentation, I would like to have some data from HRC on, on all of this. So the public can see that as well.
Mr. Van Beek?
Complaint. Data as in complaint. Sorry about that.
All right. Anyone else?
Moving on.
All right. Next item, moving on. Capital Projects update and exactly 6:45. You did, you planned this well, Mr. Van Beek. Thank you.
So with that, I'm, I'm actually, before we jump into this, Assistant City Manager Matt Van Dyken, with the assistance of a lot of staff, has prepared something. And I really think it's important, this is where typically we would say, hey, let's jump in the DeGraff bus and go around and lay eyes on things. We are perfectly fine if, because it isn't 6:45, Mr. Mayor. And we really want full, not that you wouldn't give full time and attention, but I want to reflect back to you. Do you guys want to do this now? Or would you rather we can easily delay this and do it at an upcoming study session also?
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that, too.
Delay?
Yeah, it's, because it's already 7:30. I don't know. You spoke for 45 minutes there.
Thanks for the ask.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
We figured this was a possibility, so we do that. And I don't think Matt is even disappointed.
I see him crying, Ben.
I don't know. What's under that mask?
So then, getting back almost to time, the other, the next thing, so we'll, we'll schedule that for an upcoming study session, just to be clear. And yes, Mike, you are correct. We will somehow, some way, but just so it doesn't take anyone by surprise, including the attendees and the listening public, the ordinance will be on the next agenda. But then I heard, you can't vote on anything, but I heard agreement that it would be tabled at the next meeting. Okay. Then you have the 2021 Strategic Plan and Business Draft Plan. Hopefully, this is becoming more familiar to you all because this is the second iteration. Not so many weeks, maybe a month ago, did we, did I provide to you the final report on the 2020 Strategic Plan and Business Plan? And we did that, again, two-step process where that was presented just for your information and review and discussion or question if you wanted to do that at a study session. But then you took final action on adopting that report. Normally, pre-COVID world, you would have adopted this probably about the time, as we did in 2020, that the budget was adopted. Again, from my perspective at least, the primary timing and then the primary thing that happens with your input at the advance is that we structure the budget around the input that you provide to us. So that always becomes, you know, and that's something by charter and state law that you need to do. This is something that additionally, the business plan in particular, if you go through this, the strategic plan looks very similar to last year. But then your priorities are laid out there in the strategic plan. And then the business plan is the expression of how we put legs on, if you would, moving your priorities forward. And then this would become the basis where quarterly, all staff through me, report back to you on how we're doing on those types of things. And again, you'll recall then that that comes to you in the form of a little bit more information if you want to read everything in the boxes. But it also comes to you in the abbreviated form where very quickly you can just look at red light, yellow light and green lights. So what staff attempted to do here in the four goal areas and then specifically in the objectives is you should look up and down on the objectives and things that you voted highly in your priorities. I will admit that it's not everything in your priorities. So there might be several things, for example, right, that maybe got, and this is an expression of anything, but maybe it was up on the board, but no one voted for it or a thing like that. But this is primarily the expression of how to move forward on your goals and your objectives. And beyond that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, again, this isn't an action item, but I would ask that this would be something that you take action on and would be on the agenda at the next meeting on August 5.
Thank you, Keith. Questions? Yeah, Jay?
Clarification. If tonight's discussion about LGBTQ, that was, we, we were very deliberate in separating that action we took, we're taking from the diversity, equity and inclusion priority that we have, which is, I think arguably could have been the most, our biggest significant discussion item for council to begin to come up with how we, how we deal with that or how we see it, how we take advantage of it. If this conversation tonight doesn't lead you to suggest that maybe there's an opportunity for a study session before we do anything with that, I, I'm just hoping that there's, there's a time for us to have a discussion before too much gets thrown into an, of something thrown at us. I'd really like to be able to talk to that ahead of time. Similarly, the Community Energy Plan strategy, as I've looked at this in the, it doesn't recognize me with my mask on. The goal is HB, HBPW provide competitive or specific areas of emphasis include broadband evaluation and the strategic development team for the Community Energy Plan, ongoing HBPW. I don't know that the BPW is the owner of the Community Energy Plan. I think the city of Holland and this group owns the Community Energy Plan. And if Nikki's going to be our representative to the, the team, the ongoing team that's going to set the stage for how we evaluate where we've been and where we're going forward, I would very much like to have her know exactly what I'm thinking about that. And I think I'd like to have all my colleagues know what I'm thinking about that because I'd like to know what all of these, they're thinking about. We've talked about the need to have a discussion before this goes into a committee as loosely as it is right now and say, we're going to evaluate it. We're going to hire a consultant. I have a lot of questions. Who's going to write the CE? Who's going to write that, that evaluation or that RFP? What are we going to ask them for? Are we going to stick with, try to get to 10 by 2050? Or do we think we need to be more aggressive? I sure would like that group to know that before we begin talking about the future energy plan going forward. So I'm begging us, I'm begging us to give us a chance to have all of us hear where we're all coming from with the Community Energy Plan and the diversity, equity and inclusion, two of our number one priorities. They're, yes, they're in this chart. But I just think that the ideation that could come from it, the understanding, the shared understanding that we could get from each other about what do we think about global warming? Is it happening? What are we thinking about climate change? Should we use that? Is that a discussion point? I'll tell you, the community's very interested in it. And if we're going to put something in front of them, because they're, they're as interested in that as they were in this discussion we had tonight. I want to put something in front of them that represents the best thinking of the people whose job it is, is to create those visions. So I'm begging us, can we please have a study session around those particular items sooner rather than later?
Thanks, Jay. Other questions, comments? Comments? Discussion?
Clarification?
Sure.
Are you suggesting that that happens before we adopt this business plan? Because I don't see where they're symbiotic. Yes, they're part of it, but I, I think it puts, if, if we adopt it, and just a thought here, but if we adopt it, it does put that more emphasis on it to be able to, to, to go forward with what you're suggesting.
Guys, can you put your mics on? I'm sorry.
Oh, Jay, 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 you gotta get your mic on.
Was that off the whole time?
No. Don't repeat it.
Shall I start over?
No.
I can do better the second time around. No.
So, I'll just point out two, two things, not just, so, you are correct. 2.3 individually pulled out the LGBTQT+ protections because they were two different things and it seemed like that was a specific deliverable whereby even the way that you talked about and set a priority, DEI, was more so the strategic, strategy tactic deliverable was in line with, quite frankly, the business plan and some of the things that we reported on last year and the progress that we made last year. So, I see that continuing and I heard positive feedback from council when we gave that feedback. So, I leave that to you, represented in the mayor, to talk about those conversations and what you wanna put on conversations or not. And then I'll just point out too, on the Community Energy Plan, it's in two places. So the BPW specifically, which is something common that I've done for two years now, if there's a department that has a primary or a large responsibility in an area, that would go in Section 4. But, 3.8 talks about that this specifically is something that's shared and it's not just the BPW, but it's in the city as represented by me as your city manager. And we've talked about that those are two task forces that would bring recommendations back, which is what task forces do and the way they ever outline that. So they would bring recommendations back to all of you. So that's, that's all that I lay out there and then I turn it over to you.
To the nine of us?
To council.
Yes. Let me be clear. Before the committee even makes any recommendations, I think there are some discussions that could be had amongst, among council about the vision for the Community Energy Plan. How big a bite do you wanna take? Who's on that commission? Are we gonna use public input for that? Are we just gonna rely on the people that have been on that committee the whole time? I was on that committee. I was taken off that committee for some reason. I probably asked a few too many questions. But all we did for the whole time I was on there was talk about how much money we didn't have and Hope College didn't have any money and we can't do the Hope Institute. And if it's chaired by the BPW, I think it should be chaired by somebody from the city. And if Nikki's gonna be on that committee, I wanna make sure she's got a pretty good idea about what the nine of us are thinking when she represents that body. She's fairly new to it. So we owe her. Don't, Nikki, don't let me speak for you, because I'm speaking for you right now. We owe her what we need to do before she goes into that committee and listens to the BPW say, well, here's what we're willing to do. Instead of saying, here's what city council wants to see the Board of Public worked with, help us to accomplish what we would like to accomplish.
Jay, let me speak to that. It's the, it's the ma, it's the mayor's job to appoint the members to that committee. I'm in the process of doing that now. Council will be getting a report on that soon. Council, I, I appoint those members with the advice and consent of this body. So, when, when that comes forward and it should be coming forward soon, waiting for some responses from folks, you'll know exactly who's on that committee. You'll know exactly who it is that, that we should be talking to to let them know what our priorities are in that regard. And we as council always have the opportunity to talk with one another. It doesn't necessarily have to be in a study session.
Well, yeah, we always have the opportunity to talk to one another.
We do.
I wanna talk about the Community Energy Plan in public so that our constituencies understand what each one of us think about the Community Energy Plan, the, the, the role that we're gonna play as city leaders in the future of sustainability. We owe that to them. And to say that I'm gonna, we're just gonna throw this committee together and don't worry, you'll have time, we can talk about it anytime you want. No. We need some structure around the priority that this is a 10-year event we've been into. We spent a lot of money on this thing.
And if, and if there are five members of council or more who are interested in having that on a study session, happy to do that.
Oh shit.
Yeah, Lynn?
Yeah, I, I just wanna say that I'm, I'm happy with the way that it appears on the, the Community Energy Plan appears on the, on your, I forgot that you call it.
Business plan.
The business plan.
Lena, is your mic on too?
I was gonna call it a strategic development plan, but that's not what it is. No, I'm happy with the way it appears here. I think that's great. It makes complete sense to me. And, and maybe to get back to what Mike said earlier, you know, even though I have an, you know, I'm pretty, I'm set in my ways and sometimes I'm, I'm not persuaded, I really enjoy the conversations that we have around the table. And I would also welcome a conversation about those two things that Jay mentioned. If, and, and because I think there could be some nice communication going back and forth between the strategic development team. Of course, Nikki will help with that. But going back and forth between this group and that group, so I think it would be helpful. And, and I think that as far as the diversity, equity, and inclusion piece of it, I know that, you know, it's something that we, people have mentioned and, you know, it's kind of passing. What are we gonna do about that? Where, what's our role in, in that conversation? So I think that keeping those in the forefront of our mind that we really need to address those as a group, I think would be really, it would be really helpful to me. It would be really helpful to me because I, I agree. I don't really know where you stand on that. And I think that it's a, it would be, I think, and, and I know that we have a lot of business to do, but I also think it would be really interesting to have a conversation about it just to see where we all, we all, we all land on climate change and then the Community Energy Plan and the future of that.
Great. Thank you. Other questions? Comments? Yeah, Nikki?
No, I, I, since I've been talked about. Let me put it in my, I, I think that's a good idea. And I, 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 the city has a process and it is the strategic development team and the schedule that's going on. And, and Mike, you're, you're right in that kind of our conservative approach and the usual approach leads to good results. And so I'm, I'm looking forward to that development team and when they meet. I also think, like you said, it's nice to have these conversations and when we have a study session, my son, when we have the study session and to just schedule, you know, 20 minutes or how you, you kinda do, which we always follow.
It is 6:45 right now.
But it is, you know, we need, it would be nice to generate a little excitement, kinda know where we are. So when you do develop that team and have that schedule, you'll, you will know where everybody is. And when we meet with BPW and community members, there are community members on that team too. And kinda know where, where the lay of the land is here. I, I don't, I think that's a viable and a valuable kind of thing to do. And we will, it won't have to be a lengthy thing. It won't have to be like tonight.
Great. Thank you. Other comments? Discussion? Was that the last item on the agenda? I didn't. All right.
Other, yes.
Any, any other business? All right. Thank you all. We are adjourned.